You're live, Matt.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Jeffersonville Common Council. Today is August the 3rd, 2020, and it is seven o'clock. This councilperson Ellis, would you read us an indication, please?
Yes, I will gladly. Let us pray. Merciful and gracious God, we come to you asking for your strength, your guidance, and your love to be with us. Lord, guide our hands, guide our thoughts, and guide our hearts as we attempt to do the best of our ability for the people of Jeffersonville. Help us with our decisions. Help us to remember those that are in positions less than ours and help us to lift up those that want to be your servants and our servants, the servants of the city of Jeffersonville. Bless and keep each and every one here in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right, please.
Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Burns.
Present.
Councilperson Paris. Councilperson Paris.
Here.
Council Vice President Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Croft.
Tommy's not here in person. I don't see that he's called in yet, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Webb.
Present.
Council President Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we have seven council members via phone and Council President Owen is present in the mayor's conference room.
Thank you. We have minutes from the regular proceedings of July the 20th, 2020. Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion Mr. Maple, second Mr. Hawkins. Ms. Gill.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris. Is he on or is he muted?
I, 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 it's just kicking me off. I'm sorry.
Okay. Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis. And as Councilperson Croft joined us. Eight zero.
All right, claims to be, I'm sorry, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Mr. Maple, second Mr. Burns to approve the agenda as presented.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Paris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Right, claims to be approved. We have civil city claims in the amount of $1,895,435.75. Have there any changes?
No, I have no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Mr. Maple, second by Mr. Burns. Ms. Gill.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
When Parks Claims in the amount of $286,335.75.
Yes, I have no changes to that one either.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Mr. Maple, second Mr. Burns. Ms. Gill.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right, I'm reporting a clerk. Did you have anything else, Ms. Gill?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Going to unfinished business. We have Renee Shack 2020 OR 33, which is the ordinance amending and supplementing the amended and restated ordinance. Which was 2019 OR 60. Then you're still muted.
Again, this ordinance just clarifies the difference between the debt service requirements of the 2017 bond ordinance, which was a re. It was a refunded bond that was covered, the debt service was covered with a surety bond and the other ordinance or the other SRF loans are covered with cash contributions to the debt service. So it's just a clarification to clearly identify the difference between the two debt service accounts.
I move. Okay, I move that we pass ordinance 2020 OR 33 on the final reading. Third and final reading.
Motion by Mr. Ellis and a second by Mr. Maple. Anything further? Your name is Gill.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn.
Lynn? Yes, sir. Before you go, I have a couple of questions for you. There was a shutdown at the intersection of Market and Spring. Is that a sewer related issue? Market and Spring? No, well, maybe, but it's not, it's not the wastewater department's project. Okay, maybe, it may be a development for ARC, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, they've been doing some work out there. All right. Also, and if it's a larger discussion, we can do that at another time. The CSO project bid is in process. Can you explain this new process that you guys have implemented? It's a process that allows us to negotiate with a selected contractor to guarantee the maximum price for a project. It excludes all change orders unless the change orders, change orders are originated by the city of Jeffersonville. The contractor can't come back and say, well, there's unsuitable materials. We want to change order for X number of dollars. It guarantees that price regardless of what they encounter in field. They gotta do their homework in order for them to give us a maximum price. So they're guaranteeing that that price will not go over that amount, but the price may end up being less than that amount. So it's just a way of shoes throughout the state of Indiana to, to know what the project's gonna cost before they go for funding. Okay. And the contractor selected before the estimated numbers are presented? The contractor is selected, then, then the guaranteed maximum price is in fact negotiated. They gave us a price and if we don't like that price, then we can negotiate it down. And if they don't want to negotiate down, then we can go to the next one or go out for bids. There's no, there's no risk on the part of the city to enter into that contract if it's not to our liking. Okay, all right. Thank you. You're welcome.
How do we select a contractor to negotiate a maximum bid before we know what numbers are? What's the process of selecting the contractor before we talk about numbers?
Process is they have to qualify through a state statute. We had three, three contractors give us proposals. And of the three, we selected Kokosin because they had the most, they have the most background when it comes to this type of construction. They're the tenth largest contractor in the United States for deep, deep sewer work. So they've encountered, they've encountered all kinds of things all over the United States. So.
This is just based on qualifications, nothing to do with the pricing. Is that correct?
That's right. They have to qualify per state statute and then they have to meet our selection process.
So then, if, if, how do we know where the, where the high or low part of the, where the contract is?
We have an engineer's estimate based on the 90% design. So we, we just got, we got a proposal from them on Friday and we're gonna sit down with them on Wednesday and go over their, their submit. And if we can't agree on what they're, what they propose to us, then all bets are off. So we have not signed a contract with anybody as, as of today.
Anything else for Mr. Ashack?
One day, you said there was three, three people that submitted. Were they the cheapest?
We had no, there was no, there was no amount submitted with their proposal. It was a base, it was a qualification based submit. So we looked at their qualifications, their work history, all the projects that they did similar to ours and made a selection based on their qualifications. It was a qualification based proposal. Not, not a cost based proposal.
So do we have an independent firm that evaluates those qualifications?
We have our design engineer who's gonna, design engineer and the sewer board are gonna look, we already evaluated their qualifications. They all qualified. It's a matter of who was, who had the most background in this type of construction. Was the entire sewer board present at the three interviews? Two of them. Dale and Bill were both there. At all three? No, two of them. At all three interviews? Yes, sir. Well, Dale came in late for the secondary, first interview, but he was there for the other two. Okay. Thank you.
So the sewer board evaluated qualifications, is that correct?
That's right. And they, and the sewer board made this. Based on their submit. We have, we have all of the proposals by all three contractors, if anybody would like to see them.
Was JT, or is JTL our design firm?
Yes, sir. JTL was strand.
Right. Were they part of the conversations too of reviewing the qualification company?
Yes, sir. But the sewer board made the decision, JTL nor I made the decision, it was the sewer board's decision based on the, on their interviews.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. We're gonna move on to number 10. Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR 34. This is an ordinance, an ordinance of additional appropriation that passed on the first and second at our last meeting. This is appropriating cash, if I remember correctly, $4,600 for planning and place making, out of the planning and place making fund for professional services. And I know Chad is with us tonight. Chad, were there any changes, anything you wanted to add?
No.
Any questions for Chad?
This is also a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is a public hearing and I believe Mr. Merkley is downstairs. At this time, we're gonna open a public hearing. Mr. Merkley, do you have anybody present downstairs for this?
It was also advertised for any comments to be submitted to the clerk's office by Friday.
And I received no comments.
Okay.
I'm all alone down here, Matt.
And I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2020 OR dash 34 on the third and final reading.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Burns and a second by Mr. Paris. Ms. Gill.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft, has he joined us? And Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Right, number 11 is 2020 OR 35, which is an ordinance of transfer within the same department, passed on the first and second last time. This is the same fund, just moving from improvements to professional services. Any questions?
Motion to approve on the third and final.
Second.
Motion Mr. Maple, second by Mr. Paris. Ms. Gill.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Okay, number 12 and number 13, I believe, are intermingled. Is that correct? Heather, I'm sorry, Kim. This is Kim Calabro with an HR update for the Jeffersonville Police Department and then also an ordinance amending the salary ordinance. So I will just turn it over to Kim for vote of votes.
Okay, yes, before you, you have a salary ordinance that we submitted and in the yellow, you'll see things that are highlighted, particularly on page three. And on page five, as you all know, back in February, right before we went on lockdown and everybody got sent home, that's when we had the approval for the additional funding for the street director and the sanitation director and it just never quite made it to the salary ordinance. So that's on there. Then if you look at page four, under the police department, I believe Chief Kavanaugh is gonna be on here too, if you have any additional questions. One of the things that we're proposing is our administrative assistant to position, I don't know if you guys are familiar, Ann Langley, she's been here for over 20 years. She is gonna be moving to the fire department and Cissy Ellis has resigned, has retired and today was her last day. So one of the things that the police department would like to kind of morph into a little bit of a new position. A new title, not really a new position, but a new title, a different pay grade to kind of expand upon what this position would be doing. The title that we've come up with and working with our consultant that we use in crafting multiple job descriptions and knowing that we can't completely eliminate the need of an administrative assistant per se, but having someone with specific experience with public safety and specific experience in communication. We've titled it Public Safety Liaison and Chief of Police Administrative Support. So some of the duties that the AA2 currently does is gonna be shifted to other staff members. And the focus of this particular position is gonna be more of an administrative support related more to community involvement, neighborhood associations, working with community policing, but from a civilian standpoint versus from a policing standpoint. They'll be in charge of all the social media. They'll work with the community policing officers, PR kind of responsibilities. We're not asking for any additional funding. Actually, if you look at the pay grade, it looks like even though there's a shift and there may be some initial concern looking at going from a pay grade four to a pay grade seven, the person has been in this position long enough that the salary and the longevity that they are currently receiving would be more than adequate to cover the new, the new person and the new position. So if you kind of flip out and start looking at, oh my gosh, somebody's going from a pay grade four to a pay grade seven, that's the reason, but there's no additional request for dollars.
So Kim, so it won't cost any more money from year 10 from now than it does now?
Who's, I can't, who's asking?
Scotty, Maple.
Scotty. Well, given the fact that, and this, I don't mean to sound snarky when I say this, but given the fact that you look at, we average a 3% pay increase every year. If you do the math moving forward, that would take a considerable amount of time before somebody would ever come close to, to making that kind of an income. And if you look at your salary administration policy, that hopefully you just have your copy and have it highlighted. The most that anybody can ever even get in a year as far as a performance increase is $5,000. And again, that's with council approval. So I think that would be a pretty big stretch to say that that would happen.
Kim.
I think it's worth noting to that point.
Pardon me?
Sorry, Mr. Ellis, go ahead.
Okay, in the earlier part of the year, I think when the salary ordinance was initially passed, wasn't there some concern by the mayor that there wouldn't, or wouldn't be any increases in salary or positions?
Well, like I said, it's not an increase in the salary, it's not an increase in a position. It's basically looking at a position that has existed for as long as I've been here, which is, you know, 17, 18 years. So basically, the position has existed for 20 years and I think we could probably all agree that policing in the police department has not only changed significantly in that amount of time, but significantly in the past year and even more so in the past two or three months. So in my work with the police department and talking to the chief, looking at what their needs are. This is one of the things that some other municipalities across the state and across the country have kind of looked at. It's almost, I don't wanna say like an executive assistant to the police chief, because that's not, I'm not putting words, I don't want you all to come back and say that I said that's what it was. But somebody who serves in a professional level position, somebody that has, you know, a sound background, like bachelors, a bachelor's in communication, bachelor's in public safety, communication, something like that, that can actually be someone that the police department, the city can count on to be a spokesperson, whether that be male or female for the department, representing the police chief and the assistant chief in the department at meetings statewide, when oftentimes they, we have administration who's not able to be there. Someone who can manage the social media, someone who's designated to work primarily with community outreach in the neighborhoods and with community policing on matters that really aren't significantly involving police matters. So this person's not gonna be going to people's homes. They're not gonna be working with the police officers per se when it comes to criminal activity. It's gonna be basically a liaison for the administration to work with people in the community and people in the public, if that makes any sense. Does that answer the question, Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, and one of my concerns, of course, you've probably heard me raise this concern before. When I look through the salary ordinance and look at the salaries of some of our lowest paid employees. Our lowest paid employees are usually the hardest working employees and they seem to be making less. I couldn't live on what some of our lowest paid employees are and I think anytime we start raising pay for anyone, we need to start looking at the bottom tier and work our way up from there.
And I appreciate, I appreciate your concern and I appreciate that. I, I hope you recall, last year, you all did make a pretty broad stroke adjustment to a lot of our lower paid employees. So that did minimize that. So when you look at the pay grade, very few of our people are making what it shows on there for the, for the pay grade one and two. Because you all made that adjustment about a year, year and a half ago to bring a lot of those folks up. So don't look at that number as the lowest. Because that's not really accurate, because we actually had an audit on that and pretty much brought everybody up to where they should be, given their years of experience. So if you see that 1250, that's, that's not what most people are making. And then again, just be mindful that I'm not asking and the police department's not asking for a pay increase. This is just basically taking money for an existing position, looking at the needs of the department and the needs of the community and morphing that position and basically not maintaining status quo in terms of, well, we've always had an AA2, so let's just keep an AA2. It's basically looking at the opportunity that we've had, a person, two people who've been tenured here for over 20 years, decided to make some changes and using that opportunity then to turn that into something that the department needs now. So it's not really a pay increase, it's just basically creating, using those dollars for different duties and responsibilities.
Kim, I don't see how it's not a pay increase when I just did the math of, if this person maxed out right currently on a pay grade seven, they'd be maxed out at $72,800 as a civilian employee in a police department and pay grade four maxed out is $50,000.
But you're talking about some, that, that person who's, you're talking about somebody getting a 3% pay increase. Say we hired somebody tomorrow and they were making $50,000. Then next year, they get a 3% pay increase, so they're making, what, $1,500 more than that? So they're making $5,100.
As the same person, we get the 3%, that's making the, the pay grade seven.
I'm not following that math, sorry.
You're saying that there's a 3% increase.
Well, first off, the person that we hire, according to our salary administration policy, cannot make more than the $26.88 on the pay grade without your all's permission.
Yeah, and, and the budget.
Make that much. They're gonna make $22.50 to $26.88. We can't pay them more than that. We can't pay them $26.89 without council permission.
And we, and we, and we can't pay them more than once of the budget. Currently, the budget, currently the budget is budgeted for a dollar amount for that administrative assistant to position. So that money is just gonna be shifted over to this position that, that is being no longer administrative assistant to, it's being retitled with new, with additional responsibilities. So it's no, no additional money.
So Scotty, to your question, if you're looking at the $35 an hour maximum, we couldn't pay anybody that much money.
I, I understand that completely, but eventually you could, which eventually would lead to costing more money to the city. I'm not saying we're gonna pay them $35 tomorrow.
Right.
But in 20 years now.
But that's not, that's, that's not, that's not correct, because, because you're, 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 the, the salary or the administrative policy that is by ordinance limits how much a increase an employee can get every year.
And that 7% is the max.
A max.
That employee can get to, at a pay grade seven, $35 an hour max over a certain amount of years, correct? If I'm looking at.
If you're long enough, yeah.
Exactly, so a pay grade four would max out at 24. So when, after they're maxed, it is costing the city more money.
But you can say that about everybody that we have in the city. I mean, you could take that and multiply it by the 400 employees we have and have the same.
I guess when I hear going from pay grade four to pay grade seven and saying it doesn't cost any money, it eventually is going to.
Everything you all do eventually, it's gonna cost more money. The bottom line is, the bottom line is, there's not a request for any additional money to fund this position.
And even if Ann stayed, it's still gonna cost us money, because every year she can get a pay increase, whether, because you all, the, the city council made the decision, you're gonna not cap pay grades or not to cap salary. So you know, one could argue that even if the person in the position stayed. You know, if, if you look forward five years and say she got a 7% every year, because she's stellar. I mean, you do that math and that's gonna cost us money. So I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but. Go ahead.
But the point is, when that person, when that person, you know, that person can get their stellar 7% increase every year, according to the salary administration policy. But eventually, that, that position is going to turn over, because there's going to be someone who retires or moves to another position in the. because there's going to be someone who retires or moves to another position in the fire department or what.
I would argue, Matt, that the person would turn over because of the fact that it's a position that is for all practical purposes, for a professional level position, is somewhat entry level. So my argument would be that the likelihood of somebody staying on long-term and not moving on to maybe something bigger and better. I think that's what we're more likely to see in, in my professional opinion. I mean, I, I work on behalf of advocating for our department heads and I don't try to pretend that I know what's best for department heads. I trust that the department heads know what they want for their departments and what their needs are, as I, as I do with any position that I come and make that request for. This is not, for, for some of you who are new, I know we've had this conversation somewhat in the past that it's not something that a department comes and says, hey, I want to create this position and this is where we're going to put them. I mean, it's a process and this has been discussed for, for several months. So it's not something we take lightly. It's not something that we, um, just on a whim decide that we're going to do. It's taken a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion with the consultant.
So this position, this position's been discussed for several months?
Uh, well, yes, pretty much to some degree because we've known, and I wasn't allowed to say this, but Ms. Ellis had decided to retire quite some time ago, but had requested that I respectfully keep that quiet.
We, we didn't find out until the email came out, the job posting.
Before it was even approved.
Well, and that's why.
Well, well, because, because we couldn't get out in front of this until we were certain that she was going to retire and she put in for her retirement.
Yeah. And, and given COVID and all that kind of stuff, I mean, that's, you know, probably, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that we decided to actively go ahead and advertise knowing that, I mean, if it doesn't get approved, then, I mean, we're not out anything. Everything's done electronically now. So people apply electronically. If the position doesn't get approved, then we move on and go back to the drawing board and go to plan A. So, um, I apologize. I didn't know that it was. I guess maybe I should have mentioned something or asked the chief to mention something. Times are pretty different right now. So, pardon me?
I think we're in a position where we're seeing a major increase in the potential income of an employee. And it's been talked about for months, but nobody from the council.
It was talked about months, very privately, Matt. It was talked internally. I, I, you know, I, I use my discretion on what I talk about with who. Um, you know, this was discussed. Anytime we have somebody who's leaving a position and we create new positions, we discuss those things internally. I, I don't go around talking to anybody about it. We didn't really even discuss it with the mayor and, and until we kind of have it all planned out and discussed. I mean, this, these things just got go on on a daily basis. I mean, I kind of get in the sense that maybe there's another issue here. If there is, let's talk about that. Um, so I'm kind of feeling like, I mean, it's, it's not something I usually go around. We don't always go around talking about the positions that we're going to create. And it's, it's never, it's very rare that we have two full-time people who have been here the length of time that those two have been here, who've decided to like retire and switch jobs all of a sudden. And I given the culture and the climate of policing in the last six months, I think it's one of those things that, you know, the chief brought to my attention and we started bantering around and playing with it, thinking about what should we do? What, you know, now, because basically now's the time to do that. I mean, if we're going to make a change, now would be the time, you know, and, and our, our standpoint was, wouldn't it make more sense to use an existing position and morph it into something versus trying to create a new position and still maintain an AA two? So I mean, I felt like we were being very proactive and trying to be very frugal with the dollars.
If I may, council president, may I address the council, please?
Absolutely, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Council members, good evening. With this, before you, we have this situation that's pretty unique. Um, we have an employee that's retiring. We have a vacancy that is coming available at the police department. And right now, when you look out each and every one of your windows of what we see right now in society with policing, I think we say that it's obviously a transitional time. Some of the things and some of the challenges that we're facing in law enforcement, we are looking at our organizations really subjectively, and we here, we understand the sentiments, the tones that the public is looking for policing reform. So on this note and on this merit of this position and having the dollars existing available today within our budget, this is where we came to the idea resolved for the public safety liaison along with an administrative assistant. And the existing dollars allowed us to work with the consultant and the firm of Parkland HR to cultivate and craft this position within the means of our budget. And when we'd say within the means of our budget, that is existing today of the dollars that are available. Now, I understand the question that, uh, Councilman Maple has raised and also, uh, council personnel and Ellis as well, that this has a potential to grow. But every position that you have within the city of Jeffersonville, based upon how you as a fiscal body is allowing and deploying those raises, everyone in a salary pay grade is going to reach a potential of their maximum. We can say that will happen and that will occur as those raises occur appropriately in the time and tenure that an individual stays here. So I would hope today that you would consider exactly right now where we are and understand with your, I totally respect your position, your and your responsibilities of your duties right now, where we are to fiscally manage this, the city in a responsible tone that we do not want to allow our finances to get out of bounds and, and to just grow at a rate that's out of control. But you have the ability and the means today within this position and where we are to appropriately bring this employee in. And we are right now told to do more with less. We have an employee in a job in a position that is going to be dual facet. And this task performance, this task performance has put us into this pay grade. Uh, and I want to say that, uh, human resources director, Kim Calavero, when I asked about why we needed to go to grade seven, it was because the task performance that we put in this job script, job description moved us to the pay grade seven. So this is why we moved from the pay grade four, and I understand the concerns of where the ceiling is, that ceiling didn't raise. But however, if you kept an individual and a person, I want to make the point in that pay grade four and such as a time and tenure that we had an existing twenty-year-plus employee and they stayed here for another ten or fifteen years, depending on those raises that came, you are going to reach the ceiling that you're talking about potentially in pay grade seven. I just wanted to make that as a point. Thank you and I appreciate your time and consideration.
There we go.
One of the things that I'm concerned about, and, uh, that is that we're in a situation of where we're asking the state or the federal government to provide us with some monies in our, or the, what we have spent on the COVID situation and also on what we've spent on the protest and everything. And, uh, at this point, speaking for myself, I'm not in favor of, uh, of passing this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your, uh, your comments, Councilman Ellis.
Sorry. I keep getting kicked off my computer.
Are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. You good?
Yes.
How long, how many years would it take for this person to meet their max pay grade if they did the move today?
Well, it's, oh, gosh, if they moved, if they started today, they started at the minimum, it'd be fourteen point nine years.
That's already with, okay. And that's the person that we're considering now to where it would take them almost fifteen years to get to the max pay grade?
Yes, if they started at the minimum.
I saw the posting. What is the proposed target? I don't remember seeing.
Twenty-two fifty, twenty-two fifty. If you look at the pay grade, I think I, I think I sent it to Matt.
But Steve, to weigh in on that, if we hired someone back in at a pay grade four at the minimum, it would be fourteen fifty. So.
They start off at fourteen fifty. Right now, this position's at twenty-two, you said?
Yes. So if we hired someone in a pay grade four and kept it at pay grade four, they would come in at, I believe it's fourteen fifty.
It's fifteen seventy-five, Scotty.
Fifteen seven, my bad, fifteen seventy-five, whereas somebody coming at twenty-two fifty, it obviously will cost more money.
But how long will it take them to hit the max pay, starting off at twenty-two, whatever they are, seven years and a half?
Uh, to get to the midpoint, eight point three years.
Three years?
I think she said, I think she said eight, eight, eight point three years.
Eight, oh, eight point three, okay.
I think she's.
To the mid, to the mid.
Uh, I didn't hear that, Les. What'd she say?
That's to the midpoint, eight point three years to get to the midpoint. I think that's what she said. I.
Yes.
I'm trying to.
Can you hear?
Yeah, you're cutting in and out. I'll, it sounds like you're in a dungeon.
I don't know what's going on.
Also wanted to bring to the fact of light that the salary currently right now, I'm bringing a new employee in, we would be saving, uh, a few thousand dollars starting at this rate because we have a twenty-five-year employee currently now in that position that does receive longevity. The new employee will not receive longevity. So that pay is, uh, greater right now. So we would be saving proceeding forward today, um, since we are talking about fiscal responsibility, we would be receiving, uh, we would go into a lesser rate with this plan.
I, I don't think you can compare the same because, um, I think two different jobs. You know, we're talking about two different jobs. The, the job description has changed and there's more responsibility, uh, on this new position. Um, so I don't, I don't, I don't think you can compare the, uh, the pay because it's a different position.
Yes, you're right.
Well, I know everybody's concerned with budgets and restraints and so forth, but due to the circumstances that we're in here and with the police heading and going on the front row, I, I would be in favor of it. I'm just one of nine.
Thank you, Councilman Webb.
I think the greatest concern, I think the greatest concern that, um, I've heard expressed and see over and over again is that nobody's been a part of this process of putting this together. We're looking at jumping a pay grade and a potential earning, future earning, um, in the midst of a time where we're telling everybody not to.
I want to clarify that. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, with all, with all due respect, it is not the city, city council's role to, to be involved in job descriptions and duties and responsibilities for an employee. That's an executive function. If you don't want to fund the position, if you don't want to fund it, or you, and you don't want to put it in the budget, that's, that's your prerogative and that's your role as, as the, as the city's fiscal body. But you know, we're, we're not going to sit here and write job descriptions and, and duties, responsibilities for employee in any department by committee.
And we also just to be mindful of that, we followed the salary administration policy as well. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were talking.
If I can, I mean, if I could finish this out before being cut off this time, that would be great.
No, I'm sorry. It's me. I can't. My phone is like, I don't know what's going on. So I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think the, the point was not for, for the council to be involved in creating administrative job descriptions, but being a part of the process, the budgeting process, I think is important, which is why we smoothly just appropriated or approved an agreement for a half a million dollars into the police department at our last meeting. When we work together and work through these things and we all come to it, knowing what we're, we're looking forward, at the end of the day, we get things like this done.
Well, I guess I'm a little taken back. I mean, I, I could see if, if this would require an addition or preparation or brandy additional funds, it does not. It's, it's utilizing existing funds in the police department budget for a position that is already there, that is not going to be filled. And then there's a new job title and new job description to replace that position. So I'm, I'm trying to figure, I mean, I guess, you know, in, in this, in the pay grade, we don't come up with pay grade that, that's, that's from the consultant that we are. And if, and if I'm correct, I can check my emails. I don't, I don't believe this job description was even finalized until, uh, two, two or three weeks ago, right before the last meeting. In fact, it was not done before the last meeting. That's, that's the reason it was asked to, it was asked to table.
Uh, what's an ordinance number? Thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Okay. I make the motion that, uh, we pass ordinance twenty twenty or thirty-six in anticipation of turning it down.
On what readings, Mr. Ellis?
On, uh, uh, first and second reading.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, we're just voting on this ordinance.
Correct.
On the first and second reading.
So Mr. Ellis has made a motion and you vote on it on its first and second reading. However, his parenthetical, he anticipates it's going to lose. Is that what I'm?
Yeah, because you cannot make, because you can't make a motion in the, in the negative.
Correct. Yes.
But, but it's a thumbs up or thumbs down, but.
Correct.
Question, before we have the, the roll call for the attorney, we're an eight-person council tonight. What happens if this gets split four to four?
Well, you have.
Fail, for lack of an unchoic?
Yeah, but you have to, you have to see. Uh, so you're only going to pass it on the first and second. Need five votes of the.
Takes a major, yeah, takes a majority.
Majority, five votes.
It would fail, it would fail for lack of majority.
The next council meeting, right?
Pardon?
Would it, would it come back the next council meeting?
Uh, you know, that's the age-old question.
Yes, it is.
Dean, um, so.
Larry, can I, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
So thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh, for, um, your presentation here tonight. Les, uh, regarding your comment, if the administration doesn't want to include us on types of conversations, then I think the fact that we have to pass something for you to accomplish your goals demands that you should probably include us at some point before we get to this moment.
Okay, include, include you and why?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Oh, I'm, I'm just confused is what we're.
Might want to talk to us and include us in the conversations, uh, so we don't have these types of situations. Um, I would be in favor of passing it on the first reading. Would be kind enough, uh, to amend his motion so that we can have further conversation on this and figure out if we can, um, reach some kind of agreement for something that is palatable for the, for the council.
So, Mr. Ellis, no one has seconded your motion. So Mr. White's ask if you would consider withdrawing that motion and resubmitting it as a motion to vote on this on the first reading. Correct, Mr. White?
Yes.
If, uh, my motion has no seconds, I rescind it. Appears.
But you're not going to make a motion on one reading?
No.
So, so that means there's.
I would move that we pass it on the first.
So Mr. White's made the motion to consider passing it on the first reading. Is there a second?
The motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Webb to approve or twenty twenty or thirty-six on the first reading only. You can further. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Burns.
Aye.
Councilperson Paris.
Aye.
Council vice president Maples.
No.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council president Owen.
No.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Yes.
Councilperson Ellis.
No.
Five to three.
Okay. We'll move on. Um, did you have anything? We'll move on. Um, did you have anything else, Ms. Calabria?
Uh, no, I just wanted to, to reiterate, and I'm, again, I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off, but my phone kept, or my computer kept kicking me off, but I, pardon me? Oh. Um, I did follow the salary administration policy. Um, I, I, I understand that, you know, that you all would like to have more information and Kenny and I can get together on that, but, um, I did follow the protocol as outlined in the salary administration policy before bringing to the full council. So I just, for the record.
All right, we'll move on to Chad Reichel, uh, rezoning from C-two commercial to DC downtown commercial for property at seven oh six Spring Street.
Uh, yes, uh, Warren Cutshaw, uh, the owner of seven oh six Spring Street, uh, formerly of Bales Auto Building and Sales Lot has brought this rezoning request to you. Um, comes with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. The rezoning request is to change from, uh, C-one, which is the sort of small to medium-scale commercial to the downtown commercial or DC.
Chad, I'm not asking for specifics, but, but does the petitioner already?
Surrounding already DC, uh, downtown commercial. Pardon Scott?
I think Scott's, to, to Scott's question, the, um, the Bales building, um, it's my understanding, he is looking to, um, lease and potentially sell to the, uh, Vintage Fire Museum, the adjacent lot, he pretends, he intends to redevelop as some other commercial or commercial slash residential, but he is not certain at this moment what he wants to do.
And this would be a public hearing.
Didn't this have a favorable recommendation through planning?
Yes, yes.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, unless you have anybody present downstairs. Seeing none, did we receive any public comment through the clerk's office?
No, I did not.
We don't have anybody present here, so we will close the public hearing.
I need to make a comment. I need to abstain from this vote, um, because it's, uh, our brother-in-law that owns the property, so I will be abstaining.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Or motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Hawkins and a second by Mr. Burns. Anything else? Hearing none, Ms. Gil?
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Okay, Counselperson Paris will be abstaining for the record. Counsel President, Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Seven zero. With one extension.
Right. Moving on. Uh, we'll, Chad, again, twenty twenty or thirty-eight, this is revisions to Article Four, which is the zoning districts, Article Seven, which is the development standards, Article fourteen, which is some definitions, and the appendix, which is the land use matrix for the zoning code. Chad?
Thank you. Members of the council, I have before you revisions to the zoning code. Uh, the current code regulates the location of drug and alcohol rehabilitation clinics as permitted or special exception use in a number of zone districts. Fortunately, uh, as we've come to find out over the years, there is a rather broad spectrum of treatment options um, from general counseling, uh, to inpatient treatment with medication. Um, our previous ordinance in two thousand twelve gave us some, uh, legal, uh, bounds, uh, for, um, definitions for pain management clinic specifically, um, but hasn't really addressed, um, drug and alcohol counseling, um, versus drug and alcohol inpatient rehab. Though, uh, some hairs were raised recently, uh, when a drug and alcohol counseling center was allowed to open in what is a predominantly residential neighborhood where there was one parcel that was zoned office commercial. Um, the amendment seeks to ensure that some further safeguards are in place so that we don't see these kind of treatment centers popping up in, uh, residential areas. Uh, the proposed changes better delineate, uh, the range of drug and alcohol rehabilitation centers um, and amend our use tables and our land use matrix to show where these types of uses are permitted, permitted by special exception, um, and of course consequently not permitted. Um, the intent of the organ, the intent of the, uh, revisions is to ensure that most locations will require a special exception, uh, which involves a public hearing before the BZA. So when folks, when applicants are coming to our community and proposing these rehabilitation centers, uh, they will be subject to a public hearing, uh, in front of the BZA. There's any other questions? Please let me.
You said subject to a public hearing in front of the BZA because of a special exception. Um, that takes it out of the, um, ability for the council to weigh in on it. Is that correct?
That is true, yes.
So is there any way we can do this and maintain that where the council weighs in on it?
Well, I don't know that the council weighs in on it right now. I mean, unless it's a rezoning, you don't.
Yeah.
You wouldn't weigh in on it.
Right.
Yeah, the problem is right now there's not really any, the way it's currently, we don't have any checks or balances on where some of these can open up. Right now, they can open up as a matter of right in certain districts, which this will force them to go before the BZA, which gives us that protection, so we don't have one open up, opening up where there's nothing we can do.
Under the current zoning that we have in place, where would these be allowed to go subject to BZA approval?
Well, right now for, uh, right now, drug and alcohol rehabilitation clinic is allowed by right in the OC and the IS districts, the institutional and office commercial. Um, and of course, as it was by right, I had to approve it when it went into an office commercial district. Um, so by, we've, in this ordinance, we've removed it altogether from the office commercial because office commercial is a zone district that's only supposed to be in residential areas where an office use might be acceptable. Um, as opposed to, um, you know, a whole-on sort of commercial development.
So if we pass this today, then where would, where would it be located? Where could they locate subject to BZA approval?
Oh, yes. Let me, um, well, this ordinance finds, this ordinance defines three kinds of treatment centers. So there are inpatient treatment centers. These are, uh, treatment centers where the drug and drug rehabilitation is happening while people are all living on premise. And those would only be permitted by special exception in an institutional zone district. Um, substance abuse treatment facilities, uh, that are offering outpatient services. Uh, these are treatment centers where people aren't living on site. Those would be, uh, permitted uses in the institutional zone district, uh, where they are currently, uh, permitted now, but then they would be, uh, special exceptions in the neighborhood commercial, downtown commercial, C-one and C-two commercial, and in the industrial I-one and I-two. So basically, not in any of the residential type zone district. And then we have the, um, the pain management clinics, um, which would be only allowed by special exception in the IS, the C-one, C-two, I-one, or I-two. So again, they have to come before the board present their case in, in any of those zone districts.
But right now they cannot locate in downtown commercial areas, right?
Well, this is an interesting case because I, we, there actually is one in the downtown commercial, but it's been there for so long. Um.
It was there before we passed the downtown commercial.
That is correct. Um, the issue, I think the issue is that, you know, these are, these are only, you know, they're inpatient, mostly counseling-based services. Um, I would see, I couldn't see why it would be a problem to have one on, say, the second floor of an office building downtown.
A drug treatment counseling facility?
Correct. I mean, these are people who are already, you know, off drugs, they're just receiving counseling, et cetera. They're not distributing medication necessarily.
Right. Is there any way we can, um, did you say neighborhood commercials also, uh, special exception?
Correct.
I would feel more comfortable if we remove the, uh, downtown commercial, the neighborhood commercial out of that.
I think one of the things you, I mean, we may want to consider is that, you know, the people who use these often have more need for public transit and such, and those services are more available in the downtown areas where we have, you know, neighborhood and downtown commercial as opposed to in a lot of the more commercial areas, which don't have as good of access to public transportation and stuff. One other consideration.
I, I understand, but I think right now, top of my head, we already have three. Um, but this would allow more, and that's what I'm thinking about, the future of, uh, those coming in.
Well, and again.
That goes all around the cities at this point, so.
The other, the other piece that we have adopted in here is that no new facility can locate within a thousand feet of another one, so you will start, you know, it's like three of them on top of each other and it's.
So what negatives do you see if we take the DC and the NC out of this?
I mean, I think that maybe you're like, you know, limiting the access to some folks if, you know, if and when someone decides that they want, that they would want to open in a more downtown setting as opposed to a suburban setting, maybe the only drawback.
Dustin, I, I kind of hear you saying, but if I understand this right, if I'm reading this right and chime, chime in, that not only is the, the, the thousand feet of another one, it's also a thousand feet of various other things. Am I understanding that correctly? So by the time, imagine by the time you take a downtown map and go a thousand feet from a facility, a thousand feet from a school, a thousand feet, uh, when you read that list, I, I don't know where it would be. Uh, uh, I don't know if that was the intent or not, but if I'm understanding it correctly, which of course I may not be, uh, I think that really kind of covers everything. Chad?
Yes, by the time you put buffers around parks, schools, and residential development, it would be a little difficult in the downtown area.
But right now, if they wanted to come into a downtown commercially zoned area, they would have to get a, a zoning change, correct?
That is correct.
But when, when we do this, then they don't have to get a zoning change. They just go to the BGA.
Correct. They still need to, you know, they still need to pay a fee and argue their case to the BZA, yes, which is subject to public comment and such, so yes.
That's where I see a problem. Because now we're, we're actually opening the door to allowing more.
We'll remove the conversation.
How many, uh, we have to vote on this, three readings?
No.
Just one? I thought to move planning and zoning, Les, when we set this up, it was supposed to be harder for a drug facility to be put into our city.
Well, the, yeah, I mean, this started with just coming up with a definition of a drug, drug rehabilitation clinic, because we had no definition, which was put us in the situation if we were ever challenged when we turned one down, what is that? So, so that's how this started, and then when Chad got involved in it and started delving deeper, he felt that, you know, that this was the better way to do this as opposed to just totally prohibiting, prohibiting them everywhere in the city, which is probably what we would prefer, but we can't do that. But this special exception allows us to regulate without doing a total ban, I guess is a better way to describe it. But I, I do think Dustin makes a couple of good points.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Could we put it in there to where we can go through more protocol where?
What, what, what I would, what, what I would suggest is go ahead and table it. I would go ahead and have the public hearing so we don't have to do all that again, open up the public hearing, but go ahead and then table it, and that'll give a chance, give a, a chance for us to rework and fine-tune it and maybe address some of the issues Dustin's pointed out.
Good point, Dustin.
All right, at this point, I'm going to open a public hearing on the matter of.
Yes.
Or thirty-eight. Do we have anybody present downstairs to speak on the matter? Seeing none, were there any written comments making, made to the, uh, admitted? Correct. And there are none here in the conference room, so I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to table it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Burns to table the ordinance until our next meeting. Anything further? Ms. Gil?
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Right. Ms. Metcalf, twenty twenty or thirty-nine, this is an ordinance of transfer within the same department.
Yes, this is for the vehicle maintenance department, and Michael O'Brien, I believe, is on, on here to discuss.
Yes, I'm here. Can y'all hear me okay?
You're a little low.
Can you, can you hear me okay now?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me all right? Okay. Thank you, uh, council members for hearing me this evening. Uh, this is a request for, um, additional funds, or not additional, excuse me, the transfer of funds from existing, um, vacancy, salary vacancy that we have in the vehicle maintenance department, uh, to be allocated towards, um, our general vehicle maintenance motor equipment supplies, um, to, uh, ensure, uh, that we have enough funds, um, to pay for parts moving forward throughout the end of the year. We have currently, um, activity to date out of the one hundred and seventy-seven thousand in this line item, we're at a hundred and ten thousand at a balance of sixty-seven thousand, and I'm just, I just want to be cautious. I want to be, uh, proactive to make sure that we uh, have the funds, uh, for the remaining five months of the year, uh, to ensure we pay the bills on all, all the parts moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. O'Brien?
Any questions for anyone in mind?
Mr. O'Brien, this is a, out of a, um, a position that's not been filled. I guess it was vacated earlier this year. Is that right?
That is correct. Vacated back in April.
And there are no plans to fill this position through the end of the year?
That is correct.
Is the position been left vacant due to COVID, not as much vehicle maintenance?
Yes, I, I would say it would, it is, yes. A position I know is not going to be filled, uh, yet, but this year. And I don't anticipate this happening again next year. Three different factors are, if I may, um, I think attribute to, uh, the shortfall, if you will, on this line item. Um, one of them being, I'm sorry. Somebody say something?
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, three different factors, um, one being, uh, there were some, there were some past due invoices that were brought to our attention, but, um, from, from some past vendors that we have gotten up to speed on, uh, from year previous, years previously, um, that we're back in the good, if you will. And then also, um, uh, just as I said, lost, lost, um, one of the, uh, maintenance, uh, diesel mechanics, and so some of our, our repairs have to be sent out depending upon our status of how busy we are here, actually in the shop. Um, so, and I can go into more detail if anybody has any more questions in regards to that. Um, but I don't anticipate this next year for next year's budget to that, for that to be changed. Um, just, just this one exception for this year to, to last throughout the rest of this year.
Hey, Michael, do you anticipate, uh, putting in your budget next year, another mechanic? Or are you going to weigh, uh, the cost of a mechanic versus, you know, sending these jobs out? Or, or are you still not centered around a decision on that?
Still not centered around, um, a decision on that. I, I don't anticipate it. We're running as lean as we can um, and as efficiently as we can. I think if it, any, come down to the maintenance department at any time, um, we're, everybody's helping, helping out everyone, and we're doing the job that we need done, needs to be done. Um, that being said, though, you know, our fleet's not, not going to lessen as the years progress. I think we're up now at almost 700 assets throughout the city that we maintain, anything from a zero-turn, um, mower all the way up to a front loader, um, and everything in between, of course, police and fire first and up and foremost for maintenance. Um, but, uh, moving forward, I anticipate, you know, having to fill that position, um, hopefully by next year or the year after, we'll just weather the storm and we'll, we'll move on once we get to that point.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
On the first and second. Is that a motion on the first and second?
Yes, sir.
And who made a motion for Mr. Hawkins? Is there a second from Mr. Maples?
Yes.
Right, Ms. Gil?
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins. Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Thank you all.
Right. Thank you. Attorney comments, Mr. Merkley?
I have none.
Mr. Wilder?
I echo Mr. Merkley's comments. None.
Um, we have several department heads on the call this evening. Does anybody have any additional comments from a department head?
I appreciate your.
None.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm good, thank you.
Anything else? Uh, we'll go to. Mr. White?
No comment.
Mr. Burns?
No comment.
Mr. Paris?
No comment.
Um, Mr. Maples?
No comment.
Mr. Webb?
No comment.
Mr. Ellis?
No comment.
Mr. Hawkins?
Uh, just real quick, school started off in Drager Park County Schools. I think everything went about as good as can be done. Um, thanks to the city, that new elementary school downtown, which I think we all agreed was definitely needed. Uh, the people I've talked to down there, uh, usually new schools have a very kind of protracted uh, phase in period where they get everything running, but everything went really well. It's went about as good as it could go, and at Jeff Hyde, we get kids tomorrow for the first time at Audi Learning, so, uh, little, little prayers tonight would be appreciated, uh, for a good kickoff to the school year.
All right, and I've got nothing else to add, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Mr. Burns, thank you all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
You all.